Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting order. The mayor and board of commissioners, will you rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Arthurreath?
Here.
Commissioner Braun?
Here.
Commissioner Warnock?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Marion?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all of the elected bodies in attendance.
Thank you. Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer?
Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town as you watch over our citizens, God, and our elected officials. Please watch over our police department, our first responders, and those serving overseas in our armed forces, God. Continue to watch us as we are here tonight and as we leave from here this evening. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. All right. And if you will excuse me, I may lose my voice because I'm suffering from strep throat. This is the second time I've gotten it this year. And the board doesn't want me to pass it on to them, so... First is a boardwalk project update, and that is Commissioner Warnock and Mr. Ryland House.
So, I came here last month to propose my Eagle project to the board, and this is how it turned out. So, here's the drawing of how it was built. As you can see, it's a bit different from my previous drawing. It is 65 feet long, with... The width is eight feet, and the ramp coming off the side is 12 feet long and is six feet wide. So, on the first day, we built the first frame by putting down the pavers and laying a four-by-four on top of that, making sure it was nice and level. And then we built a frame, which we put on top of those four-by-fours, connecting it with brackets. And then we also did some of the decking that day. On the second day, it was raining, as you can see, and we did build another frame using the same process. And on the third day, we started decking, and since there was a turn... The second frame is where the turn started. We left a space in between boards so that we could trim the boards and then add them in later, so it would be nice and even. And on the third day, we built more frames, and this is where it started to turn back towards the left to create sort of an S shape. And we also did some more of the decking. And on the fourth day, we did more decking, and so... And as the previously-built frame, leaving a space for the needed... For the boards that need to be trimmed to make the angle. And on the afternoon, a day before, we worked into the night. We built the frame that was going towards the Public Works Building first, and then built a frame to go in between that, to make sure the angle was nice and straight. On the fifth day, we did more decking, and we also built the side ramp, and we pretty much finished the decking that day. And on the sixth day, we built the side railings that would keep people from falling off. And this is the finished product.
Mr. House, who was all of your helpers there? Would you recognize them too, please?
Well, I had some people from my troop, and my sister, and my parents, and some other adults there. So, this is the overview of it. So, even though it was muddy and slippery, the workers, they kept of a positive attitude and good-worth ethic. I learned that I need to make sure that I know what the beneficiary wants, so I can provide good leadership in my future endeavors. I want to thank Commissioner Warnock, because without his knowledge, tools, and help, this would have been very hard to do. Thank you.
And I know on behalf of the board of commissioners and myself, I have actually looked at the boardwalk and think it's fantastic. A big thank you to your parents, to everyone that helped with this project. It's going to be a great addition to Veterans Community Park. Absolutely, thank you.
I appreciate all your hard work, and like, day one or day two it rained, day three it rained, day four... I mean, it was... After... Once it started raining, it really didn't stop until about the last day. So, I think the first and last day, we're only two days, we didn't have a lot of rain, but everybody just kept plugging away at it. We got it done, so... Good job.
All right. Next on the agenda is a traffic study update. Town administrator.
Give me one second to load it here. As you're aware, we commissioned a traffic study. The planning commission had asked for a traffic study to be conducted. The intent behind the traffic study was, a lot of times typically when developments come in, the planning commission will require the developer to do... Put together a traffic study to show impacts of the number of car trips and impacts on the general area of the community in which they want to develop. And sometimes you're dependent upon the traffic study that's conducted by that developer. And the planning commission felt it would be better to get a traffic study done of the entire town in the key intersections, so that they could think ahead when a developer comes in to develop a piece of ground, instead of just focusing on the intersections right at that point of the development, that they could take into account all of the intersections in the town. And so, this traffic study, this is the first phase of it. The intent of the traffic study is to get basically a baseline evaluation of the traffic impact now, and then the next phases of the study will be to project if certain pieces of land were to develop the way they are permitted to by the zoning code, what kind of domino effect would that have to the town. And so, the whole idea is to help the planning commission be a lot more proactive and ahead of the curve at dealing with the future development. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tom Delunia, who is our engineer with KCI.
Good evening. Just to get an update for this traffic study, I'm going to let... You can control the dials, right? Okay. Basically, I just wanted to go over what we've done and where we're at, and where we're going to go from here on out. Basically, what we did, starting about two months ago, was start collecting data from all the different intersections in town, and then the out-of-town would be the next slide. So, those are the intersections that you saw counters at. We then downloaded that information into computers. Sorry about that. And from there, we were putting models together and a lot of data to sort of determine what's going on in the town. So, we took the physical characteristics of the inventory. There's a bunch of sheets that we filled out at the sites to make sure we had everything that the traffic engineers needed. We met with Calvin last week and talked about the planning efforts that are going forward and where things are going to be happening in the future, and we're talking about what the growth rates are going to be. And so, those are the kind of things we're trying to project forward with the help from the town. Next slide. Okay? This is a slide of just a summary, but these are all the intersections. It's... You can't see it a lot, but basically, that's a graphical representation of the intersections, and it actually shows the counts. We took counts in the morning for three hours and took counts in the evening in three hours, the peak hours. Those are what we generally do to figure out what the rates are going to be, when the peaks are is going to really dictate what happens to that intersection. So, this just gives a graphical representation of all the counts we've taken to date. Next slide. Not to scale. What are you doing? We have to work as a team.
It's almost scale there.
Yeah. Okay. From the standpoint of what we have to look forward to, we still have to analyze the existing conditions. We've started all that. Estimated future traffic volumes, five and 20-year, that's what we're going to be presenting. Analyze feature conditions, prepare a draft summary report, and then the final report. So, those are the tasks still at... That we're still working on. And next slide. This is our shows last week when we met with Calvin, talking about what the zoning is, what the traffic engineers need here is basically to know what areas are still need to be infilled, and where growth is going to take place, and they start calculating what kind of traffic those areas might generate in the future. I just mentioned this, that the future tasks are these right here, as far as estimating traffic in five and 20-year, and analyzing future conditions. That's pretty much where I'm at right now, and Calvin asked me to give you an update of what we were doing, and like I said, the traffic engineers right now are working on those last four tasks that we still have to do. Is this a good time for questions or...
Tom, a timeframe for when that'd be done?
Probably next month or so. I mean, that was the original plan, was once we understood what the tasks were and what areas... I think the biggest question that we had just recently is, what areas is the town planning to grow in, and what types of development in those different areas that are projected? And for that reason, we need to know that in order to project what the traffic might be in those areas. So, that really didn't take place until last week, when Aaron and myself sat down with Calvin. And I think he's been waiting... The planning commission's been working on a lot of different things, too. So, we were waiting for all those things to come together, so we could make some decisions ourselves.
Thank you.
You're talking about that five and 20-year... You're back up there.
Five and 20.
Yeah, studies?
Five and... The five and 20 years is estimated future traffic volumes based on where the town is right now, and what growth might take place in the next five years and then the next 20 years.
I don't know how... We can't survive Main Street from Town Square to the Red Lake at Martins. And any given day, you can't get out of there. It doesn't matter what day of the week it is. You can't get out of that development down there. Our development, you can't get out of there. They've got... It's backed up as far as you can see. Then the light turns at Martins, then it makes it even worse. I mean, I don't know what we can do, but it's a disaster. I mean, come on, we don't try and figure out what it's going to be five and 20 years down the road. You got a problem now, let's see if we can fix it. I mean, traffic in town, you can't get around this town.
Bill, I think what this is actually is based on, you know, what may happen to the town. This would allow us to see what the traffic is projected to be, so that we can take proactive measures to not have the traffic be what you're talking about. If that makes sense.
Yeah, what are you doing in the meantime?
This isn't a five and 20 years before we're going to do anything. This is...
What are you doing in the meantime?
This is so that we can understand the traffic. Right now, we don't know what to do, because we don't know... This is a traffic study, so we can understand where the traffic problems are. If that makes sense.
Just to add something, Bill. One of the problems is, that's not... Even though it's Main Street for us, that is Maryland Route 273. And that's whatever action we may want to take...
State Highway has to improve it first.
Buddy, you work for State Highway. You know what we're going to go through with something like this.
I know what would improve his immediate complaint, and that has to do with the police department. You need to put somebody down there at PNC, get rid of the people that do this all the time. Courtesy has no business on the drive. We have a set of rules of right-of-way for driving in Maryland, and people around here simply don't follow.
Well, maybe that street needs to be made one way.
That would be an excellent idea.
Oh! Do you remember when we made it one way?
No, not that street. We've never made it one way.
There was a talk about making it one way, and that...
That was almost done up here, but not that way.
For a while after... A while after that was proposed, they had to move the meetings to a larger venue. That didn't go over well.
But traffic is held up there so often, and I know there have been accidents there, people pulling out.
I'm surprised it hasn't been made.
And it's just a...
When we had the...
When I come into town on Friday nights, it's nothing for me. We stop at Conkles or whatever it is now, and it takes a five-minute journey to get up to the Red Lake. And once you get past PNC Bank, it could very well be two or three cycles of the signal light before you get through, simply because of ongoing traffic and people wanting to turn left.
The study we had done, I'm trying to remember what year... KCI did it.
Okay.
We... Because we had the upswing in accidents at Cherry and Main Street. And part of the problem at that time, we identified, was the sight line for coming down Main Street was blocked.
At Walnut Main Street?
No. Coming down Main Street at Cherry, because that was where the problem was.
That's why there were those parking places were lost.
We lost those... We lost the park... Parking. Okay, it is... I'm sorry. Everybody thinks it's... I'm sorry, you're right. It is Walnut, not Cherry.
That's Cherry and other parts.
Yeah. But it's... We had to take parking spots away, because they...
Line of sight wasn't there.
The trucks were parked there, and you couldn't see anything. So, somewhere back in the archives is part of that traffic study.
Do you know when that was done?
Over there.
Well, it was even wrong... It was even before that, because...
It was around 2008, when cars come here.
Okay. I'll look for it.
Yeah. So, we had that done, but that didn't go into anything more than that intersection and the impact of parking cars, because it led to a... That's when we had to move to a bigger venue.
I think no matter what we do, we're going to have to work with State Highway on it, because it is a state road, so we don't do any maintenance on it, and it cuts right through our community, so...
I think also, when you guys changed the lights, it made it worse right there, too. When the light used to make the noise, and now...
State Highway.
State Highway.
Yeah. So, whenever that got changed, I think that made it worse for me to support, too, because that light's now right there, decided being further forward. So, it really backed up right there.
And some of those decisions, unfortunately, we got stuck with, and...
I think there was a resistance from the town to actually do that, and State Highway insisted on.
And another issue is if people come flying up there, they go more than 25 miles. That's another problem. If they go the 25 miles there, we might have a chance to get out, but... Because I'm always got...
Thank you. You're welcome. All right. Moving forward, business meeting item. I have a resolution in front of me, 2018-02, which is the Board of Ethics appointments. I believe in whoever we appoint, this board should agree to it, so they did interview a candidate, Mr. Andrew Snyder, who said that he was interested in serving on our town ethics board. He is a resident of town. He is actually Bud McFadden's grandson. He lives in a beautiful brick house right on Main Street. The board did interview him. I had already met with Andrew, and tonight, we're going to go ahead and appoint him, as well as reappoint the two other members to the ethics board. So, I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas the code of ordinances of the town containing Chapter Two titled Administrative and Government, which establishes the general guidelines associated with the proper administration of affairs and business for the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, in accordance with the town charter and other applicable federal and state laws; and whereas this chapter contains Article Six titled Ethics Provisions, which establishes the town's ethics policies and the establishment of a three-member ethics board, and further establishes their membership terms of appointment, removal, establishment of a chairperson, legal counsel, responsibilities, and authority, removal from the office, and whereas this section specifically calls for terms of appointment; and whereas there has been a significant amount of turnover on the Board of Ethics, and the mayor and commissioners would like to reaffirm the persons appointed to these boards with clear definition of their terms of appointment; and whereas the mayor and commissioners would like to appoint and reappoint the following persons to serve on the ethics board in accordance to the above code sections, and until their successors are duly appointed. Mr. Dave Fox to serve until June of 2021, Charles Chip's Lebal to serve until June 30 of 2020, and Mr. Andrew J. Snyder to serve until June 30 of 2019. Therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and board of commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 14th, the day of August 2018. Can I get a motion on the floor for Resolution 2018-02?
So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion regarding the term of appointment for the ethics board?
Just one minor correction. Dave Fox to serve until... Should say June 30 of 2020, I believe.
Okay. Perfect. With that correction, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right. First is citizens input. Mr. Foster, Mr. Cawthorne, floor is yours. Thank you.
The reason I'm here this evening is because...
Excuse me, sir. Who are you?
Phil Foster. I thought he said my name. I'm sorry.
I did say Mr. Foster. Sorry about that.
Would you give us your name?
Phil Foster.
Address.
105 Biggs Highway, Rising Sun, Maryland.
Thank you.
First house on the left, out of Rising Sun on 274, by the railroad track. I'm sorry. I thought he said my name.
That way out of Rising Sun.
Yeah, okay. My reason for being here is that I'm paying the $384 debt service tax, and I don't get anything. And I've been told that I've paid town taxes all these years, and I've been paying a small amount of town tax. When I bought the land, I didn't even know it was in town. This was a... So, I paid the small amount of town taxes year to year and didn't say anything, and all of a sudden, I get hit with this $384 debt service tax. So, I talked to town people, and they said that there's no way out, and so then, because my town... My lot was developed, could be developed. So, it can't be developed, so I had to go to the state of Maryland and get what you see right there. And Calvin said that I could get a right-of-way. My right-of-way is 65 foot in the front, it's right by the railroad track, and it sets about 20, 25 feet in the air, where the letter there says, there's so many... There's three or four. There's a telephone post, there's two utility poles, and there's no way to get a right-of-way through there, and the state denied me a right-of-way, so I can't build a house on it. No way. So, what happens is that it's really not that big a lot, and at all the right-of-ways, the town has certain slopes, and the state has certain slopes. So, what I'm saying is, I cannot put a house on that 65-foot, which it goes 35 to 40 feet all the way back to the railroad track, and they're telling me that I can put a house on it. There's no way. So, what I'm saying to you is that I'd like to be relieved of this town debt service tax that I've been charged. And I talked to Dave. He's very polite to me, come out to my house, and he had a couple of things. He wanted to combine my lot to the... That town piece to my present property, and my attorney says I have to have a whole plat redone, and so, the letter said, "A bit expensive," and I cannot see doing that. And Dave did help me draft a letter and everything, and I took it to my attorney, and he just says, "There's no way." Now, if I want to proceed with that, I got to do something else, but I don't think it's fair of me to add $384 to my tax bills and not get anything for it. So, do you have any questions? I've lived up here since... When I got the immaterial, I grew up to Rising Sun because I married a Rising Sun girl, and that's the reason I've built up here, is because I like Rising Sun. It's been a good town to me. But all of a sudden, I, you know, I get... I'm retired now, and I don't... Didn't really...
Your land now is landlocked completely?
It's landlocked completely. Exactly. The state of Maryland says I can't get a right-of-way into it. He said it's impossible.
Okay.
Is there any way we can get a copy of that by chance? If Calvin can see it, the letter?
Sure, you'd have plenty of copies.
Okay. Thank you.
I might have another copy here, yeah. Here, here's a copy.
Thank you. And you said that you'd spoken to Commissioner Warnock previously?
Yeah, right. Exactly. Talking to him tonight, as a matter of fact.
Thank you.
I had to go through the state of Maryland, even if that is. I had to go through two people. I went through... There's another letter I have for some lady in Kent County that said I had to go to this guy. So, it's been a good little trouble for me to get the attorney... I've got two letters from my attorney here, finally, and it hasn't been fun. Pretty little stressful for me, to be honest with you. Anybody have any other questions?
No, I think Commissioner Warnock, if you have more questions for us, and we're going to talk about this weekend after the meeting, absolutely.
I know I'm...
Mr. Foster, I can see this, and I think, Buddy, you're going to say the same thing as Mr. Foster. You have landlocked, too?
He's a lot nicer, better guy.
I know you are. But I know how cantankerous you are.
Yeah, he's got more property than I do.
But I mean, yours is landlocked, too?
I could probably put an entrance to mine. I haven't tried, and there's not one there. It's got 250 feet of dirt, and mine's on a county grid, that's there.
Okay. Can we discuss this?
Absolutely. Yep. And if Mr. Foster can stick around, talk to the meeting, I'm sure you can have more conversations with him.
Yeah, I have a lot more information, but I know I'm only allowed a certain amount of time. That's the way it works, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Rausch? I'm sorry, I hope I said that right. Ms. Rausch?
Hi. Hello. Hello. Okay. Sorry. Okay. My name's Alicia Rausch, and I live at 6 Louise Court in Rising Sun. I'm just here for a couple of different reasons. I'm new to this, so I'm a little nervous. But, okay. Recently, we had an issue with the townhouse across the street, and we were told that it is private property, so no one can go in. The issue that it was is that the grass was overgrown up to my waist, the backyard. Come to find out, the lady has been in Texas for nine months. She's... Oh, she's not? Oh, okay. We were told she was in Texas for nine months. I don't know if that's true. Okay. But the point is, is that someone was going back behind the house to walk through, and they noticed that the curtain had fell. Well, you know, being concerned that no one had seen this neighbor in months, they walked up to the house. There was a foul smell. They looked in the back room. There was hundreds of cans of cat food everywhere, jugs of water. The ceiling had collapsed in the house. So, you know, we're townhouses. It calls for concern. We... They called the town, and they had a police officer come out, but the problem was that the police officer never even went and looked at the house. He never even stepped foot to the house, the back of the house, to even look. He just talked to the neighbor. The neighbor said she was away, and then he left. Then we were told that there was nothing else that they could do. It's a neat point. I guess I'm confused as to, if there's possibility of abandoned animals or whatever else is in this house, why is that not a concern to check this house? I mean, you look at TV, if you see dogs, you know, caged up or tied to a fence for too long, that's a concern, but not the evidence that you found with the smell and everything else? So, that's kind of just a concern for me. And I don't know if I stopped there, because I have a couple others and stuff.
No, you're good. You can just go ahead and state there, and then... Once we go through our reports, I'll get the chief to go ahead and comment if he has any.
Okay. And then also with Louise Court, I, you know, have commented on Facebook. We've had our conversations. The other thing, I guess, I watched some of the YouTube videos of the meetings, and to my understanding is that we want Rising Sun to grow and be developed and to get money back up in value of homes and everything. But Louise Court, I just feel like is falling under. The roads in Louise Court, or the main road, is awful. The top half isn't as bad as the bottom half. I have pictures on my phone, but if you guys have been down there, which I hope that you've I have pictures on my phone, but if you guys have been down there, which I hope that you've gone down, you would see. There's potholes that goes all the way down the middle of the road. It's bad. It's probably a foot deep. There, at the end of the bottom of half of the neighborhood, there is a part of the road that you can see every time it gets rained, it sinks in the road. You can see where it's lowering and lowering and lowering. It's all cracked. Also, the end of the neighborhood, years ago, my mom used to come in with some of the neighbors because of parking issues. And we were told that it's public parking. Nothing you can do. People can park wherever they want. Well, that was settled, but we were also told that the overflow down at the bottom of the neighborhood was supposed to be turned to an overflow parking lot for extra cars. That was never done. There's a nice couple in the neighborhood that every summer, they go in, they cut the grass to keep it trimmed. It's our community. I get it. We should do our part. But I guess, where does the line get drawn of who comes in and starts helping us? When does the neighborhood get, you know, when does someone come down and cite people for having their grass up to their waist? When does the roads get fixed? There was a picture posted of a patchwork being done in Louis Court from two thousand fourteen. But I'm pretty sure that patchwork was because the water line broke and it needed to be fixed. Which happens a lot in our neighborhood because I think it runs right through that area. Another thing is, is that there are cops coming in more every day. I see cops coming in through the neighborhood doing a check, which is great. But they're not doing anything about the parking. People are double-line parking, so people can't park next to them just because they think that they own the spots in the neighborhood. It's wrong. It's rude. And honestly, I had my own problem. I had a daughter in March. And in May, I had an older lady, that's my neighbor, banging on my door, screaming and yelling because I parked my Jeep in a parking spot. That was her parking spot. And instead of asking me nicely, I was harassed. And I've been harassed multiple times by her and her daughter who lives next to her. And I called Town Hall. I left voicemails. No one ever came out to help me. The cop, like, town cops never came out, anything. I'm not trying to have my daughter woken up because my neighbor wants to harass me over a parking spot. Kind of ridiculous. So I don't know. We were also told back then that someone would come out and put numbers on the parking spots, even though they're not owned, just to help with the confusion of whatever. That never happened either. Yeah, so I understand things need to be done a certain way. And I don't mean to come off rude in any type of way. But I just have a lot of concerns. I've lived in Rising Sun my whole life. And now I'm raising my daughter in Rising Sun. I want things to be good. I want it to be beautiful. I would love to see our town grow. If there's things that I can do to help with fundraising, to get more community events, I'm about that. I will do that. I'm staying home mom. I like doing things like that, especially if it helps our town. So my biggest concern, like I said, is the roads, the parking, and like, the neighborhood being kept to a standard. You guys, I complained before about the debris in the parking spot. Someone cut their tree and just left it in the parking spots for months. That finally did get cleaned up. I don't know if it was from you guys or from the neighbors. I mean, complaining goes a long way. But I just, I guess I don't know what the next steps are for that.
No, absolutely. Thank you for coming out and for voicing your concerns. I think the chief will maybe cover a little bit of it. It looks like Commissioner Warnock may as well. And you're more than welcome to stay and talk to our Streets and Sidewalks Commissioner and go from there.
Okay. Do I stand here?
No, you don't have to.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
I have one question.
Yes.
The part that you're talking about for overflow parking, where was that at?
So when you go into Louis Court...
Go all the way down to the end.
Right, go all the way down to the end. There is a grass area.
Now, does that belong to the town?
We...
Sorry.
That, I mean, we can, we'll talk about it in a little bit. I've got some information presented on that.
Okay. All right. Chief?
Okay. During the period of... The date ranges from July third through August fourteenth. We responded to four hundred and seventy-seven calls for service. Beyond that, I didn't have a report for tonight, but I will address some of the issues from Louis Court. Okay. Number forty-three. Approximately a month and a half ago, I received a phone call about animals being loose in the residence. I went there. I checked. I realized who house, whose house it was. We are familiar with the lady that lives there. I made contact with her. She is caregiving for her dying father. And the neighbors that called and stopped in that day were advised that. The rumor mill must have taken over again and we were called recently back to that residence. Officer Van Askey went there, went to the rear of the residence, did not smell any odors or anything like that. Yes, the grass had grown, but again, we made contact with the homeowner and she was okay. That was conveyed to the complaining parties again. So the problem we see here is that the communication is excellent on Facebook for some things, but it's not getting around to you all when we've taken care of the problem.
I physically walked back there myself and looked. And I saw the hundreds of cans of cat food and the jugs and the ceiling collapsed. I don't know if the tenant was aware. I don't know if she thought someone was going in and taking care of her home and there's not. Or what the problem was, but to me, you would think that there's animals in that house with the amounts of cat food cans everywhere. So that's what was a concern for me because the houses are connected. If there was a smell and there are dead animals in the house, it's going to start to linger. Or the ceiling can bust if there's a water break. It's going to go into the other townhouses. So the other day, when the cop came out, I did, I was outside. I did not see him go up to the house at all. So I don't know if it was two times the cop came out or only once, but I did not see him go up to the house at all. I saw him talking to my neighbor the whole time and then got his car and left.
If you noticed earlier, I was going through these calls for service. We received three calls for service at that residence in one day, so two different officers went there. But again, we were completely aware of what was going on there and we knew that there was no animals or people inside the residence. Okay? Parking. We can enforce some things in that townhouse community and some other things we can't. There's no assigned parking there, right? People double parking? Yeah. We can issue citations for that if the officers see them. But we can't enforce who's parking in front of your house and who's not. I understand that. And that's majority of the calls we get when it comes to the parking.
I guess, is there like a way to put out flyers or something to these tenants that own their homes that believe that these parking spots are there? Because that's the problem that happened. The two ladies, the mom that lives next to me and then her daughter lives next to her, they believe that because they own their house, they own their parking spot. So they believe that they can come and harass whoever's parking in their town. For me, you know, I'm a tenant and whatever else. That's the issue that I'm having. I don't, I normally wouldn't mind, but when you're coming to my door, banging on my door, harassing me, that's where the problem comes. Because...
Understood. That's certainly something we can look into. And I'm not trying to cut you off. I can speak more to you after the meeting. I just don't want to hold up the town. But those are issues that we do see. Yes, you do see a police presence in there more often. There is going to be more enforcement. Just remember, the people that live there, the people that are calling, will cause the enforcement. And they're not going to be happy at the end of the day because typically, the one that calls is the one that is doing the violating. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
You call me for speeding and guess who gets caught speeding? You. And then you're not happy. That's what typically happens in that community. But, but I'm giving you that fair notice that when we come down to enforce, we're not going to be, you know, being nice to you because you called. We're going to go down to do the job.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? But with that being said, we were aware of that residence. We also made arrangements to help the young lady that lived there take care of any debris that was in her yard and the overgrown, overgrowth of stuff. So that should be fixed for now. Okay? Anything beyond that, if she doesn't maintain it, it's going to be a violation and that will fall under code enforcement stuff. Okay? With that being said, if there's any other questions, I can address them about Valley View.
Chip, I want to just emphasize that we just can't go into a property because somebody says, well, we think...
Oh, absolutely.
We, that's, there's, there's all kinds of violations of, first of all, Fourth Amendment. But local Maryland laws prohibit you from just randomly...
We can't just go traipsing across anybody's property on a whim. If we have evidence to, you know, to the contrary, we can take some actions, but we just can't go there because someone thinks. I assumed. We can't do those things.
I understand. It was just the facts leading up to is what the problem was. And for, you know, the people, like, when we scored that we were all talking, we just felt like, you know, we felt, I guess, no one saw the other officer come back. We only saw the one. To us, you know, you watch an officer come out to report to a call and then not even go and look. And then just leave that looks bad, but not see the other officer. You know what I mean? So that's all what's...
I understand what you're saying, but again, we've been there numerous times, numerous times with the same thing. And it just seems that the rumors there in that community are taking off. And if you need a police officer to respond, you have to dial nine-one-one. Leaving a message will not get you us right away. It may take days before we actually get those messages. So what we prefer you do is call nine-one-one if you need to see an officer for a call. Okay?
And any type of smells or anything like that, would you encourage them to contact the health department?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Wouldn't you be able to call animal control, I guess? Are they allowed to just go into these houses?
Animal control has been there also because one of the other times I went there, animal control was leaving as I was pulling in to go check again.
So they're not allowed to just go into a house either?
No.
Okay.
You have a Fourth Amendment right to not be searched and that's one of the issues that we encounter.
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator?
Not to belabor the point, but I would add, and I'm going to look to Brenda because you and I go back a long way on the Valley View stuff and the things that we, that we have tried to do and Augie, you can remember this too. We offered to do some things down there. But I've always said in my mind, and it's not, it's absolutely not meant to be derogatory. It is the way it is. There always appears to be three groups of people that live in Valley View. And at times, there's disputes. And whenever we tried to come in and solve an issue with the parking, we've actually tried to hold meetings here and went door to door inviting people from Valley View to come up. And we did offer to do assigned parking spaces down there. Most of the people said, "No way." They came to the next meeting. They didn't want...
I didn't think we were allowed legally to do that.
It's, it's a public street. The chief and I have talked many times about a methodology in which we could do that. But the overwhelming majority of the residents absolutely don't want it. We have, we have come up with a variety of ideas. Yeah, we offered the, some kind of overflow parking, but we don't own the land down there to be able to do it. We've tried to come up with resolutions on trash, how to more effectively deal with trash containers down there. Because it's not a good setup. You have to leave your trash can in your front yard and, you know, some people don't pull it back. So it's, it's not, I just want to say, it's not because the town doesn't want to do something. We are limited on what we can just say, "You are going to do this." And so we have tried to open up to the residents to try to come up with common, common ways to deal with it. But we, we just hit a brick wall all the time. So with that said, I think it's great. If you guys want to initiate something again, I don't think there's anybody sitting here that's not willing to try to resolve it.
The easiest way to do it is just to put a sign up saying, "This is public parking."
I'm telling you, it won't help my family. I've been through this for years.
Believe me, those three have joined us since the early two thousand six, two thousand seven. Believe me, Brenda has...
If they show up at a meeting, we send the police out to check on them.
Brenda has, has taken chunks of me at times, okay? However, the point is legally, the town is restricted because it's, it is public parking. We can't tell you where to park down there. Brenda just showed me. There is apparently a guy down there who has a really nice car and parks in two spots.
But he has no problem coming in drunk all the time?
I mean, people run the sidelines down there and stuff all the time.
I would say that, that for me, the biggest thing...
I need an offer, stand in my yard. I really don't care. Stand in my yard. I don't care.
One of the biggest issues that we run into is also is communication. If something has occurred in the past and you don't know that it has happened, a lot of it is communication. I can tell you, for instance, one of the things you mentioned was about a lady with her brush that she just threw out in the street. Well, one thing you may not know is I can show you the Facebook messages back and forth with the lady saying, "You need to bundle your trash and we'll come and pick it up." And this is the way that we pick up yard waste. And she constantly said, "No, I'm not doing it. No, I'm not doing it." So after four weeks, I decided to let our Public Works crew go and pick it up. But I wanted her to follow the rule of law, which stated that we needed it bundled for our Public Works crew to come and pick up.
But that's not true of you guys either. And I'm saying, like, I understand that there's laws to follow, rules to follow. But how, where do you guys cross the line to say, "Okay, this has been like this for a month. We need to do something because she's not listening. She told you no."
Can you get tickets? Can you get tickets or something like that?
It just makes...
You can get a citation, but it doesn't define attached.
It just makes the neighborhood look...
Like crap.
It does. And Valley View isn't that bad. Like, there's a lot of families in there, a lot of kids, like. And there's plenty of times where I go out and people think I live in the ghetto of Rising Sun. Like, oh, why?
All right. Town Administrator, did you have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Warnock?
Okay. So I was, I was going to do this during Commissioner comments, but the mayor advised me, just go ahead and go into it now. So I've been doing a little bit of research on a number of different things. Everything from the original plat records to some originally covenant deeds and so on. And so first of all, to ask the question about some of the parking issues, there's... Once you get to the end of the street, you have about, I think it's about twenty feet. And once you start to go down the woods, like that hill going down to the woods is part of Valley View. Once you get to the bottom of that hill, you're no longer in Valley View. You're actually in Stevens Preserve. It's actually owned as a future development plan in the town of Rising Sun. And so that wetlands area that would be, would not be developed effectively, right? So it's, that area would be preserved pretty much as it is forever because it can never be developed. It's a wetlands area. So in fact, you know, depending on where you're at along that whole side of Louis Court, the back of all those townhouses either backs up to Stevens Preserve or it backs up to the apartment complex. I can't think of the name of it, but down the hill from Janes or it backs up to Janes. Lidle Court. It's actually a different name, but either, it's one of those three. It's either Stevens Preserve, we'll call Lidle Court Apartments, whatever. Meadows, Meadows Side.
Or Meadow Side.
Yeah. And, and Janes, United Methodist Church. That's the three pieces, big parcels of land that the development backs up to. Down towards the, we'll call it the eastern end of Louis Court. There's, it's primarily Stevens Preserve and part of it backs up to the Meadows Side. So as far as at the very end, the, I guess, the very last unit there is seventy-five or seventy-seven. On the original plat plan, it shows open space down there. And also on the original plat plan, there's open space next to eighty. And in fact, there's open space between fifty-nine and sixty-one. During nineteen seventy-four, and I, I'm going to put this out there, but I don't want it to reflect on the current owners. Okay, so this is something that happened in nineteen seventy-four. The land has changed hands a number of times. But it appears that the developer actually sold the open space. After, like, it was, the people moved into the house and about a year later, there's a deed showing that the, well, the builder, actually, not the developer. The builder, who was Decatur Construction Company, sold the property for ten dollars and some additional considerations, which aren't specified in the document, to the property owners at fifty-nine. And you can actually see where that carries through. Now, this is my reading of this. I'm not a title clerk or any, I mean, I don't do titles for a living. I have financial background or financial industry background, but not titles. So I'm reading these documents to the best that I can understand them and it appears that's the case. Now, another interesting thing is that the title includes your deed covenants. So here are your covenants and restrictions. No lot shall be split, divided, or subdivided for sale, resale, gift, transfer, or otherwise. No facilities including poles and wires for transmission of electricity, telephone messages, and the like shall be placed or maintained above the surface of the ground on any lawn. or maintained above the surface of the ground on any lot, and no external antennas of any kind shall be maintained. I'm assuming they didn't think of the internet in nineteen seventy-four coming to houses. No boat trailers, house trailers, trailers, abandoned vehicles, trucks over five tons, or any similar items shall be stored in the open or on any lot, street, or any parking area, public or private, in Valley View Village. No structure or outbuilding other than the principal dwelling, house shall be built or otherwise located on the lot. No fences, walls, or boundary hedges shall be erected or maintained on the lot. No unsightly objects of any kind, including but not limited to billboards and signboards, shall be erected or maintained on the lot. So that's your six covenants and deed restrictions. So here's the problem, though, from our perspective. We don't have the legal authority to enforce deed restrictions. The homeowners association does. And what the document fails to establish is a homeowners association. So you have deed restrictions, but I don't know what your enforcement mechanism for the deed restrictions are. And it would actually prevent things like trailers and boats being in your neighborhood. That's actually in your deed restrictions. I just don't know how you go about enforcing them. It's possible you could take civil actions against your neighbors. That starts to get real messy, like one individual neighbor taking a civil action against the other. That could, I can only imagine how that would turn out, so.
But this also becomes messy when we do code enforcement.
Yes, because these things don't apply to our code enforcement.
It should be a homeowners association, but there's not.
Yes, basically.
Homeowners Association would solve a lot of your problems because you, as the property owners or homeowners, would have the ability to enforce these deed restrictions.
I'm sorry. How does it happen that a neighborhood that is supposed to have a homeowners association ends up not having one? Because I know that the.
That is such a loaded question.
The neighborhood behind Harrington, the old, or whatever that is now, Harrington, that's a homeowners association. They pay for it. I know that they do. But like Summer Hill is not a just a homeowners association. And now our neighborhood is not exist in homeowners association.
Yeah. So that's a much bigger question than what we could answer in this meeting. But so another, so that's. So another thing that's also happened is that open space was transferred to somebody, it appears, right? It was deeded over to them. And then at some point in the future, the original developer of the land deeded a portion of that open space over to the town for some reason. So he didn't have the legal authority to do that, as far as I can see, based on the way the deeds read. And so it's a really interesting problem. I think we're gonna have to do, like, get somebody, I mean, this, like I said, this is not my expertise. I think somebody that understands deeds a little better is gonna have to read through these. And we're probably gonna have to do like a title search almost to understand that because that was the only piece of land. It actually, it shows on the Cecil County maps as being owned by the commissioners of Rising Sun. The only thing is, is it's not only the original plat plan, that subdivision, right? What's right there would violate the deed tenants. And secondly, as far as we can tell, that open space was already sold to one of the residents. And all of this occurred in nineteen seventy-four and nineteen seventy-five. Just for the record, I born in seventy-eight.
There are deeds in that development that does say they have two parking places.
Right, so again, those fall under deed restrictions that would kind of fall into.
Does it give you exact spots, or is it just say them two spots?
It just said two spots.
There's a lot of confusion evidently. So some deeds do say, some don't. Some people think it's public, some people don't.
So it's one thing a lot of this communication. Because some people rent and there's landowners, and I think that might be the people that rent, the landowners are not telling them everything that's right or wrong.
Right. And a homeowners association, I mean, I think typically a homeowners association actually, as the name implies, falls back on the owners more. If they have people renting, then it's on the owner, it's the owner's responsibility to ensure that their tenants are complying with the covenants of the homeowners association, or of the deed. So, because typically you wouldn't give a copy of the deed to your house to your tenant. I mean, that's just the way it is. So I don't, and I don't know, I mean, I know a couple, but I don't know whether you own or rent. I don't really care. It's not really relevant. But there's also a number of other issues that we're looking at. So I think we're, there's some things that we're gonna, you know, look at internally and see if there's, there's actually easements that are blocked off. So, you know, people that live in the center unit, if you want to get back to mow your grass, you need to be able to get to your backyard to mow your grass. And people have fenced off the access, the easement that they're entitled, that those homeowners are entitled to use to get back to their backyard because there's certain sections of it that have a town. It's like a fire lane behind.
Fifteen foot right away.
Right.
And a prime example would be, we don't allow chain link fences in the town of Rising Sun. However, some of them are grandfathered in. So now we have to go through and figure out.
Or it's public parking, then if it's in someone's deed, but you guys think it's town property, is it town property or is it that owner?
It is town property. Okay, I mean, it's very clearly defined everywhere from the plat plan to the individual, or to the neighborhood plat, to the individual plat plans for the houses. It's very clear that the town owns basically from curb to curb.
So it was deeded to the town after it was done construction?
Correct.
Do we have any update on roads in there, Calvin, when the last time we went in there with road maintenance?
In terms of their potholes that she's talking about, we just initiated a directive with our public works department to target a thousand linear feet of sidewalk repair and seven hundred and fifty square feet of patching and pothole repair. And that's all supposed to be done by October first.
Could you see if their property is on the list?
Yeah.
And the only thing that I can tell you to do is to do exactly what Ms. Maynard and Bill and his wife do. Come out and talk with us. Because what we don't know, we can't fix.
Yeah, and I would also say the other thing is the communication channels with the town. So if you need a law enforcement officer, we don't have our own dispatch center, call nine one one. They will dispatch. It's not, this isn't like Baltimore City where they get, you know, two hundred thousand nine one one calls a day that are all bogus, right?
On the question she had about them cleaning up their property, we do have that in town. If your grass is X amount of high, either you get a notice, you're gonna clean it up.
I was just getting ready to, that was the next line.
Okay.
So if you have an issue where it requires law enforcement, so you believe that, you know, people are speeding or drunk driving, or, you know, parking issues would fall in, so traffic violations or you believe that, you believe somebody's dead in a house or something like that. I mean, call nine one one, right? That's the appropriate response. If you have an issue with tall grass or the unkempt nature of properties, things like that, that's a code enforcement issue. And the best thing to do is call town hall. And they'll actually put together a form called, was it Request for Action? I believe it was the form we have. And so we will, you know, we basically record that information. It gets sent to the appropriate parties, whether it's code enforcement or public works or whatever. And somebody will go out and take a look at it, figure out if we can address it.
The other thing that I would say is, while myself and a couple other members, maybe one or two of the board are active on social media, some of them are not. And we have different commissioners in charge of different departments. So we have a streets and sidewalks commissioner, we have a water and sewer commissioner, we have a parks and recreation commissioner. So if you're trying to reach out to them, the best way would be through email or to come and set up a meeting here at town hall.
I was actually gonna say, I don't, I mean, I'm in that group, but I don't honestly follow all of the things going on. I honestly, I hardly use Facebook anymore. It's just, so it's not a good mechanism. The best is to contact town hall. You know, they'll send us an email. I do, I, you know, I keep an eye on my email through the town, text messages, things like that. But, and honestly, you can contact us. You can go on the town's website and find direct information. You can find the different department heads and contact the people. So if you have a parks and rec issue, go on the town's website, find my contact information, give me a call.
Just for F O L, there's a lot of things, a lot of misinterpretation, but act of open set up with those rules and regulations with the deeds for those properties, when somebody sells it, it doesn't change the rules, okay? The second thing is, who owns the twenty twenty-six and twenty-eight?
I would have to look. So, oh, is that, where it's really wide and there's like a patch of grass?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's that fire lane area through there. And technically, the homeowners association would own it, but obviously, it's a homeowners association.
You've never given a fire block up through that bill?
Yeah, I agree. Or up through the curbing for that matter.
Sorry, just sorry, Patrick. Where you were talking about the easement for new people or residents to get through to their backyard, is that something that you guys are looking into to figure a resolution for too, or is that something that can't be done?
We're taking a look at some of those things. I don't know that we can resolve them necessarily, but we're gonna take a look at them. They may be more of civil matters, right? So, but we're looking at it.
The rent was repaid probably ten years ago, complete repaid of sidewalk.
It's just, it's, the bottom half is getting so bad, like, it's the huge problem.
I've been in there, and I've actually been over at forty-three.
I was in forty-three on Saturday morning.
I've been there, I was there today, I was there a couple, I've been there a few times this week.
We were told to do that.
And, you know, so the guy that was mowing it is somebody I know, and I know, you know, the owner too for that matter. And the one thing I will say is, I mean, I've been from one end to the other on the streets just today alone. And I understand that there's problems with the roads in Valley View. I can assure you, there's roads that are worse in this town. And, I mean, that's not a great thing to be saying, but, I mean, Wilson Avenue is probably the worst road in town. So we're in, you know, we are looking at a timeline to start addressing some of those. Commissioner Braun, if you have anything to say on that?
No.
No, okay. I said it for you, right?
I agree that there's more of a, I guess, it's just understanding which roads are town roads and which ones aren't. So I understand that Main Street is not a town road, it's a state road.
Yeah, Main Street and two seventy-four are both state highways.
So going this way and going this way, we don't know.
Technically, Route one is a federal highway.
All those streets are all town roads.
So Walnut Street down to, around the trailer park is a town road. From there on, it's a county road. Mount Street down to about where the houses stop is a town road. From there on, it's a county road. Wilson Avenue changes into a county road when you get to the intersection at Kirk Court where Veterans Park is. All the other roads, and then I guess Pearl Street is the only other county road that goes, or town road.
We share a lot of responsibilities with, and unfortunately, we can go and fix it because it's their responsibility.
Yeah, and I understand that. So I guess it's just getting an understanding of everything, so.
All right. Like, we have to get a permit to fix water line. I mean, like, if we have to dig, if we have an emergency water main repair, we have to, I mean, think about that. There's water bubbling out of the ground. We gotta cut a hole in the road to fix the water line. We can't just do that on a state highway without permission.
All right. Moving into my mayor's report, very brief. My church, Pleasant View Baptist, is holding a drug addiction seminar. You're gonna have, I know, chief and RSPD will be represented, as well as the medical community and parents from six thirty P M. to eight P M. at Pleasant View Baptist Church. I highly recommend attending. There'll also be Narcan training there as well. Fifteen hundred and three kids were done by the anonymous people that give a damn about the community this year. And Lisa is the damn leader for that organization. So a big shout out to them for doing fifteen hundred and three kids. They stocked them with school supplies, backpacks, everything they needed. So a big shout out to all the people that are anonymous in the community that care and give back. Big grand opening is, for Rise and Grind is this week. It's on August seventeenth at nine A M. It's our first grand opening on Main Street in over a decade. So we are super excited for that. And it's been a long time coming. So I highly recommend coming out, checking out Rise and Grind, grabbing a cup of coffee. Myself and the board of commissioners are all gonna be there, so we're excited to be a part of that as well. Moving into commissioner comments, Commissioner Althanreath.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
Yes, the planning and zoning board has continued to meet two days, two days a month all through this year. And at this point, we're almost complete doing the math for the growth area. And we're nearing the end of the work on the zoning table of permissible uses. And I'm hoping that within the next two months, we'll be able to set up a public hearing on the comprehensive plan. That's it.
Perfect. I did forget, Commissioner Althanreath, you attended the Plumpton Park Zoo opening.
Well, it wasn't an opening. It was just a thank you to the contributors who helped make bringing Annabelle the giraffe possible. And that's the plaque that has town of Rising Sun on it. So if you go into Jimmy's house out there, which is now Jimmy and Annabelle's house, you can see the contributors. But now that she's there, the need has not stopped. There's medical, there's food every day. There's upkeep of Jimmy's house and Annabelle's house. But go out and check it out. It's a beautiful sight to see these two together and also to see all the other work that Cheryl and Nick have done out there at Plumpton Park Zoo. They've got Fall Brew at the zoo coming up, which is a great time after you take your kids and you want to come back and have an adult time in the evening at the zoo and see what it's like. Highly encourage you to go check that out. But they are a partner with the town. They send everybody into town after they're done out there to get groceries, to get gas, to get food, to get anything they possibly can. So they've been a great asset to the town, and we wish them the best. And we'll continue to partner with them to help them be successful.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Althanreath, for going on our behalf. Commissioner Pearson?
Nothing.
Commissioner Warner?
So we finished up the boardwalk, as we had presented earlier, over at Veterans Park. And with that, we've actually completed all of the bridges and boardwalks. And now, if it would just stop raining for a few days, so that we can get equipment down into the, into that area, we will complete putting down trail surfers and such. So that trail system, hopefully, you know, will get done this year. I'm not optimistic that it's gonna ever stop raining. I thought it might actually in August, and we're halfway through and it still hasn't stopped yet, so we'll see. Over at the dog park, we have started the boardwalk over there. Unfortunately, it's rained, you know, no sooner than before the concrete, it started raining. It hasn't stopped. And so hopefully, when we go over there tomorrow night to continue on with the framing, we will be able to do that, that the concrete's cured enough. I'm not optimistic that that's the case, but maybe it is, and we can continue on with that portion of the project. So those two things are completed. The next thing, over at Veterans Park, I would like to look at doing a ribbon cutting for the numerous projects that are over there. There's three scout projects.
Have all them come out and their thing will come out and everything?
That's what I would like to do, and have all of them come back out so that we can do ribbon cuttings at each of their projects, basically, like a walk-in ribbon, walking ribbon cutting, I guess is a.
Maybe even Cecil leadership, since they came out to clear some of that property.
Invite all the volunteers that, and we've had, we're probably over, probably around a thousand hours or more volunteer hours on that project. So it's been a significant effort. And I appreciate all the work that each of those different groups of volunteers and the scouts in particular, and the dedication of the families of the scouts. I mean, you know, mom and dad are, you know, instead of, in the case of the house triplets, there's three of them. Yeah, it's like, you know, it's one thing to get one of your scouts through, it's another thing to get three of your scouts through. So it's a lot of dedication. I appreciate all the work and effort they put in. And with that, oh, Movies in the Park is scheduled for August thirty-first. We anticipate rain. So we have a rain date of September first, and we'll see how that plays out.
Sounds good.
And that will be at Kilby Cream. And I know it's called Movies in the Park, and we're not having it at the park, but what we find is the attendance, if we have it at the park, is, we've had a low of, I think, six and a high of about forty. We had, but our mean is probably less than twenty. It's, you know, our average, not even our average, like, our mean is very low. So it's not the greatest. And there's a lot more mosquitoes and stuff there. Where Kilby Cream, we tend to have around two hundred and fifty to three hundred people show up. It's good for the economy for Kilby Cream, because a lot of the ice cream.
It costs how much? About two hundred and fifty dollars a movie?
About three hundred dollars a movie now. It's gone up a little bit, and Kilby sponsored it, so.
What are you showing?
It's gonna be the greatest. It's the greatest showman.
It's the greatest showman.
It'll be the greatest showman on August thirty-first, unless, of course, you know, the sky's open and then we'll go for September third, first.
All right. Any more business come before the board this evening? All right, just some upcoming meetings. Next town meeting is Tuesday, August twenty-eighth at seven P M. The following after that will be Tuesday, September the eleventh at seven P M. The planning commission will meet on Monday, August twentieth at six thirty P M. Upcoming holiday, Labor Day, Monday, September the third, we will be closed. Nothing to come before the board. Could I? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Could I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Aye.
All right. All in favor? Thank you. Needing adjourn.